Mr. Morris, would you like to lead that?
Yes, Director, Director Gleason is here and I think Paul Troppi is supposed to be here as well. And they're, they're going to give a little follow up to the water rates discussion that they gave. Asked answering some of the questions that the, the council had during the last presentation. So Director Gleason.
Welcome.
Thank you. Myself and Paul are here in my office. We're masked up. We're ready to go. I'm going to try to share my screen just to get into. Water sewer rates. Okay, can you see, can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So again, just to, to touch base on all this stuff. You know, this is our proposal. It's based off several criteria, but this is the follow up. So if we don't do the full slide deck as we did before, we'll try to save a little time and move to the, the action items that were requested to, to see some, some different slides here. So just a quick background. Alright, so the history. Everyone knows how important the water and sewer infrastructure is and how critical it is for, as an asset for the city. It's 24/7/365 uninterrupted service that our citizens expect and deserve. And so this is what we're using in order to, to facilitate that. In 2016, a rate study was done. This was the Claremont, done for the city of Claremont by Municipal and Financial Services Group, MFSG. And at that time, they determined that our water sewer rates, the structure didn't really align with, with the needs of our, our costs for the city for operational expenses. So at that time, MFSG, with the council's approval, decided to, on average, increase rates by 17% annually for the average to large users. And then on the low consumer rates, those stayed the same and the sewer rates were also frozen for five years in order to try to help facilitate a rise in our income, but ease off that lower bracket there. So one of the best practices, so again, ensuring a safe water supply, full cost recovery, encouraging development and maintaining an adequate cash reserve. So last meeting, there was a question surrounding water source protection. This was a slide that we had presented. And so water source protection as a whole, the city has three sources, white water, rice reservoir and the sugar river. And those, those all flow into dull reservoir, which is essentially a large holding tank where it's treated before it's treated better. So one of the questions was about water source protection action items. Again, I'm not going to read through every single one of these, but this was prepared by the White Water Watershed Advisory Committee. May of 2020, they created several action items which we're currently working on now. These are progressing nicely. I can get everybody a copy of all these, but essentially there's a lot of projects going on, on, on current water source protection action items. So these were the water sewer rates. FY16 through 2021. Historical data again, so you can see the highlighted yellow, that's that low end user, the zero to 1,000 cubic feet used. That rate was locked in at the 240, you can see run across the board till current. And then if you drop down to the sewer rate, the table at the bottom, those were all, those all stayed the same as well. So how did we develop these rates? So we developed them using the prior rate study conducted by MFSG, as we said, 2016. We kind of use that as the framework. Mr. Chapi worked hard on, on trying to figure out the best method to increase rates, but not, not burden the community with kind of exponential lift in that rate line. So essentially it was a, there's a 2% per year increase. So the operating cost increase is 2% per year. So water cost increase average is 2.35 from 2014 through current historically and sewer cost increase averages about right around 2%, so 2.03 per year. And so the, all these rates are, are set to cover the full cost. So this is the slide that you guys saw last time. It kind of outlines where we're thinking the proposed rates would be adequate to, to pull us up away from the operational expenses. The debts and the loans and over the course of the next five years. Everyone's seen this one. So one of the questions was, well, what options, what other options do we have besides doing that specific rate structure? One, so as you can see in this chart, is give you your minimal users, your, your average, medium and large commercial users. And so option one, as you can see in the header down below the chart, is the original proposal that, that we've come up with. And that gives you an average of what, what those bills would be at an annual increase for per quarterly billing period. There was a question about, okay, well, what if we adopt water and freeze sewer for a year? And that's column two. And the third scenario was freezing water in sewer in 22. And then moving forward for the next four years. And then there was, there was an off question about, well, what would it look like if we just made water and sewer one specific rate as a whole? As you can see, it's, it's a bit significant on a rise, but that's what that would look like. So those were, those are kind of the different options in order to maintain the, the projected rates that we'll need to make sure that we're on the right trajectory to get out of the hole here. So this is proposed option one. So this is essentially, you saw this last month. You'll notice the yellow table looks a little different is because we changed it from percentages to actual dollar figures. So it'd be a little easier to read for those increases in the different water rate users. And that's based on a 3% annual increase. Feel free to jump in if you want.
Yeah, if I, if I could just add a few comments to, to this slide. The, um, the, if you look at the quarterly increase decrease for 21 to 22, which is, which is next year. So if we, if we restructure the, the water rates so that we don't, instead of having four tiers, we get it down to three tiers. What you're actually doing is you're actually lowering the rates for customers that are in the, in the 1,000 to 12,000 cubic feet per quarter range. And so if, if you see that third line, the medium commercial customer, their actual cost per quarter goes down $35 dollars in that, in that first year. So, so this is the, the impact of doing this restructure so that we have less, less tiers to, to deal with, which, which is confusing for people when they, when they read the bills. And it's, and it's actually more, more equitable when you look at the, the overall costs and when you compare it to other, other towns as well. So, so that's, that's the importance of, of the proposed rate restructure for year one.
And so this is a similar table with option two. So option two would be adopting the water rates and freezing sewer. Just so you can see what that would look like. And then with a increase of 4.2 annually after that. And again, I know it's a lot of information and we can, we can push this out to the council on a, the full slide deck. Option three. So this is freezing all rates and then a 4.5. So the, kind of the key takeaway on freezing the rates for a year, if we decide to do that. The challenge is that after a year, we're going to have to, we're going to have to adjust the, the rates to match the needs of the operational expenses. So essentially we're putting on hold, which is, which is okay, but the, the rates moving forward would be adjusted accordingly for the next few years after that. And this is option four. This was the single water rate for all users and single sewer rate for all users, just to give you a snapshot of what that looks like. And again, that box on the bottom, as you're looking at that, just so you know, on the right side, where you're seeing the blues, the blue lines there, that's, those are your quarterly bill, what the quarterly bills were. So just taking into account it's quarterly versus monthly, when you're looking at that, can divide that by three.
After this, I made a, I made a comment last meeting that most municipalities have one, one rate for water and one rate for sewer. Because over, over the years, we've, we've had these four different tiers. And, and the first tier hasn't changed in, in five years. It's at $2.40 per the first 1,000 cubic feet. So in order to have one, one rate for, for all the water customers and, and obtain the same amount of revenue, you'd have to have a rate of $5.42 per cubic feet. So, so the first, the, the first tier customer is going to get, it's going to get walloped by $155 per, per year for, for five years. And, and the, the higher users which have a rate, they're paying a rate right now of over $7, they're going to see a decrease in, in the first year. So, so it's, 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 it's obviously doable, but it just penal, it penalizes the, the majority of, of our customers.
And again, these are, these are just to showcase kind of the questions that had come up. So we can try to facilitate answers to all those to make sure we've got everybody across the board. Again, these are, these were the, the, the same, these are the same graphs from last time that just kind of shows you cash balance versus operating expenses. And so you can see the red line as it's coming across there in the center. If we kept rates the same and froze them for a year or, you know, as we're freezing them, all of our operating expenses and, and current debt, obviously things, things move up. And so we need to adjust accordingly to, to offset that. That's water and that's sewer. Again, these, these didn't change from last time. So the other question was, well, what is it? What does my bill look like? I can see all your charts and numbers, but what, what would my bill look like? So this is, we omitted obviously the personal information from, from these. But this kind of gives you a snapshot of, of what a bill currently looks like today for a specific household size or business. And then on the right there, you can see what those numbers would, would move to with a proposed rates, just so, so you're aware. And I know, I think councillor Kloski last time had had a question about the additional charges and sewer and fix and all those other things. So you can kind of, this should showcase that a little bit. It's quite a list of, of charges and different people have different things. So this is pretty good look at what that looks like. But this, this again, this would be a single person household. You can see just the easiest spot to read is the total current charges, 13226. So the, so the bill quarterly would be 136, 36, so about four bucks per quarter, being about a buck 30 per month extra. So cost of a cheap coffee, I guess, somewhere. Um, so then we're looking at a small multifamily unit. Again, all the increases on, on the right from what the current snapshot is today. And again, this is just to show that the cost increases are, are pretty well spaced out and the percentage, we're trying to be fair and equitable across the board by not being massively impactful on people's wallets. But also building that, that padding we need for additional infrastructure and projects moving forward. Here's a medium industrial. So again, there's a lot of components as you move to different types of users, as you can see on the right, it gets pretty busy, but different people have fire lines and different cellular meters and things. So each bill's a little bit different with these large commercial users. So I think one of the, a few of these are restaurants in town. There's a couple midsize industrials and some multifamilies as well as a single use.
Yeah, the last couple are restaurants.
So again, there's a lot of slides here, but we're trying to make sure that we tried to capture a segment of each, of each user. There's a large restaurant there. And there was one that actually went down a little bit. But we'll keep pressing on. So anyway, there's a lot of information here. So moving forward again, just to kind of tie things and circle back around. So the goal, you know, these water sewer rates kind of expire June 30th, 2021. So this June. So essentially we're trying to get new proposed rates or, or some form of this model based on what we're, you know, the different options that we've, we've proposed here. What we'd like to try to do is get a consensus by, by May 12th, which I think is the next meeting in order to just, just have a plan to move forward. So again, a lot of information. We're not looking for an answer tonight, obviously, but this is just to showcase kind of the questions that you had asked and we'll be able to send all this out right at this meeting.
Can you go back to slide 14 for a second? If you want. That's the comparison.
Here?
No, the four year, the four year, for option comparison. I, I just wanted to point out here, if you look at proposals one, two and three in year one versus the, versus the current cost per quarter. There's, there's not a, a big difference between any of those three options and, and where we are currently. The, the first two options, they, they adopt our, our proposed restructuring of the water rates. Because I think that's important in, in the long run that we do that to, to be more fair and equitable. And also that's, that's what the majority of municipalities do with their water and sewer rates. So, 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 um, you know, any of those three, first three options aren't going to be big, big differences. Even, even in the, even in years two through five, for all those first three scenarios, the average increase per year is between three and four and a half percent. So there's not a big, there's not a big variation there.
Okay. So I guess I would, I would open it for questions or if anybody needs me to go back to a slide or if, if you'd like me to, if you just need to digest, that's okay too. We can send this slide deck out. Obviously it's a lot of, a lot of stuff, but hopefully answered what you had asked last time.
So council members, does anybody have a question for Director Gleason at this time?
I have one.
Okay, councillor Kloski, thank you. Cause when we're sharing a screen, I can't see everybody.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's not so much a question, just a, a comment. Thank, thank you to both of you because I think this is exactly what we were asking for. Like individually, I know the stuff I wanted was in what you just presented. And I don't have any other comment except for I'd like to see these separately, like you said, so it's a lot to digest. So thank you.
Yeah, no problem. You're welcome. I can, we'll get this out once we're done here.
Councilor Matto. Um, in the tier three and four rate payers, how, how does that, those rates compare to other towns in the area?
Yeah, we, we have, we have slides that show, and they're in the, they're still in this, um, presentation.
Let me try to.
Yeah, that's the best way to do it because most, most municipalities just have, have one rate. If, if we show you what their, what their, what their costs are compared to ours, that's probably the best way to do it. Yep, those are the ones.
Can you guys see that? I've, I've got it hidden online, but.
Yes, I, we can see it.
Okay. To go, go, so this, yeah, so this is a small, this is a small user. So if you go to the, yeah.
4,000?
Yeah. So this, this would be 4,000 cubic feet a month, which would be 12, 12,000 cubic feet per quarter, which is the third line in most of those slides that we were showing. So this is where we would be with our, with the, our original proposed rate, rate structure for 22 versus the, the surrounding cities. So we're, we're, we're kind of in the middle, maybe a little bit on, even on the low side. But, but notice, notice how we're high on the wat, we're high on the water, low on the sewer. And, and that's because of our, of our water rate structure. And then if we, if we go one more, this is even a larger, a larger user, this would be 18,000 cubic feet per quarter. So again, but again, we're kind of in the, in the middle compared to these other towns.
So, so the way we have our structure now where the bigger users pay a bigger percentage of the burden. Does that deter from development in Claremont? It doesn't look as though even with that structure now that, that we're way above other communities.
Um, I'll, I'll answer it a little bit and then I think Ed might want to comment on it too. When we first implemented the, the five year play, play, plan after the consultants did their review in 2016, the, the water rates, except for the first tier, the water rates went up 17 and a half percent a year for four, for four years. That's, that's what 70, 70%. And I got a, I got a call, I really only got one or two calls. And I think they were both from laundry, from laundromat owners who, who were upset because the, the water rates at the, at the higher tiers were going, were going up so much, which is where, which is where they, they were falling. So, so I can't answer your, your overall question. I, I got some complaints from a, from a couple of commercial users.
And, and lastly, I would just like to know if the city manager is going to be making a recommendation before the council votes on this.
Um, we can do that. We were recommending the, the first presentation that we gave to, to move to the three tiers and to, to try to move that, that middle class down a little bit. As Paul said, I have had, most of my complaints come from the, some restaurant users and the laundromats. It seems like that, that third tier where most of those, most of those businesses sit is, is a little bit on the high side. And it's, it's hard for those, those, I'm going to call them small business owners. It's not really the big industrial users that are complaining, but it's those, those restaurants that are higher water users and they're, you know, struggling through the COVID time, but I was even getting some complaints before COVID that the, the larger water increases was really in fact affecting them and their bottom line. And so there, there was some strategic initiative to, to use this to, to help build kind of a economic development incentive as we're, we're having those higher rates on the, on the business class type people. I don't want to say right out that it's a disincentive for people, but it makes it harder. Every one of those costs that's lumped on a business makes it harder for a business to come in and start in the city of Claremont.
Other questions? So we allotted about 20 minutes for this and we are going to have it on the agenda for May 12th. I have several questions, but in the, because of the time, I'll just send my questions in to the city manager and, and everybody will get the responses back prior to the May 12th meeting. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you both, Director Gleason and Mr. Shoffey for, for that presentation. I know what you're, what we're seeing is the result of hours and hours of data crunching. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you please help me?